This conference will now be recorded.
If that does happen and there's a tornado wish, tornado warning issued, what we'll do is we'll immediately adjourn. At that point, you have two options. You can either leave here at your own risk, or you can follow Assistant Administrator Wirt and City Administrator Kelvin Shaw to the basement and to the old gel cells to seek shelter. We will see what happens. Hopefully, we don't have anything like that occur. Uh, let's see, it's 6:30. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mary Andrew Dawson. It's hereby called to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on this sixth day of May, part of the 2024-2025 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication to values that guide our city. This meeting is now called to order. First item on our agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Matt, you have the floor.
Would you stand as able and join me in our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council members, mayor, administrators, staff, ward members, all need to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our city and this whole community at large. We're grateful for their service and their dedication to our citizens. We ask your protection for all of our city and county first responders, police, sheriff, fire, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staffs, all who are 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our military and civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life from threats from it out and more sadly, threats from within. Tonight, we have a special award, firefighter of the year. A great blessing for Jacob Carver, firefighter of the year. That's a tough job being a firefighter, and that is a well-deserved honor. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the annexation petition received by E.W. Thompson, the Pettis County Ambulance District. Go ahead and call up Director Simmons to go ahead and lead us into this public hearing.
Thank you. Before you have an annexation petition, which was presented to you by Diane Simon, Vice President of E.W. Thompson Incorporated, and Nicholas Gurkey, the Board Chair of Pettis County Ambulance Incorporated. The property is located on 16th Street, directly west of the Redford property, as you can see on the map. So this public hearing, once we're done with this, this will sit with council for the next two weeks and be presented on May 20th for approval. E.W. Thompson, at the time of the application, was the owner of the property, and I understand that that closed on April 30th. So the ambulance, Pettis County Ambulance is now the owner of the property. And they're asking to be annexed in as C3 general business.
Okay, very good. We'll now go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone that has any comment regarding this annexation, if you please step to the microphone and state your name and your address. You'll be allowed in three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Diane Simon with E.W. Thompson, Inc. My home address is 17449 Brockman Avenue, Coal Camp, Missouri. I own property in town and am here tonight representing E.W. Thompson, Inc. I'm also representing Pettis County Ambulance District, but we have with us tonight Chief Pennington, if anyone has any questions about the location. But the intent is to build another ambulance station to meet the growing needs of the west side of town, but also to take time off of their response time. So we feel like this is a good location, easy access to the highway, easy access to just outside of town, all the residential, and also the older adult housing that's in the area, too. So if anybody has any questions, we'd be welcome to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Would anyone else like to provide a comment? Do we want's going twice? All right, we'll go ahead and close the presentation. Next, we have a special award. This is the firefighter of the year award. We have a presentation. Chief Irwin, you have the floor to go ahead and do it.
Sometimes. Thank you for having me again tonight. Tonight, we are here to honor Jacob Carver as the Sedalia firefighter of the year. Jacob was introduced to the fire service through our Sedalia Fire Department's Fire 1 and 2 class. He has gone on to complete his associate's degree in fire science as well as completing his bachelor's degree at UCM and is currently adding prerequisite courses for your master's degree. Is that correct? And PhD. He's going to be a doctor. I refuse to call him doctor, but he will be a doctor. To say that Jacob has a larger-than-life personality is an understatement. His love for the fire service and his unwavering dedication to the community is first rate. Always first to do the job that is less desirable, to include spending the better part of two days in a fire pup suit during the balloon and kite festival. He was also the leading dog in a parade, which what we believe is the first and only parade that our fire pup has actually led. He has gone on to deliver top-quality fire prevention talks and tours with kids and adults alike. A large portion of our social media posts are drawn up and delivered by Jacob. Jacob is a breath of fresh air around the fire station. I truly appreciate him, and it is an honor and a privilege to award him firefighter of the year. Thank you.
You left out that you're an author, too, right? Right. Chief. You also left out that he's an author, right?
Yeah, he is an author.
Thank you very much. ABC's firefighters.
All right, moving things along. Appreciate that, Jacob. Now I have the approval of the previous session minutes for the council meeting dated April 15th, 2024. Do you have a motion to second?
Delu.
Second. Any council discussion during minutes? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, now we have the rule call of our standing committees. Up first, we have Finance Administration. I believe we do not have Chairman Marshall, so I'll turn this over to Vice Chairman Rob.
Thank you very much. We also, oh, it's Robert, oh, sorry. It is who you got.
Chairman Remy Dole will present a presentation about voluntary time off policy.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I forgot to get with you. Shannon had a family emergency she had to be called away from. So if we could delay this, open next meeting.
Could I have a motion postponed from the council?
Delu, second.
All right. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Postpone to the next council meeting. This presentation, the council discussion. Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we will postpone that. Okay, thank you, Vice Chairman Robinson. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We do have another presentation scheduled for tonight, though, and this comes from Parks Director Amy Emily, and she will give a presentation regarding the future of the Aquatic Center and the bowling alley.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight just to kind of answer some questions, give a presentation on where we got, how we got here, and just open it up to the floor for any questions to kind of clear some things that some people are maybe not understanding or just haven't heard or haven't read. So outdoor aquatic facility, where we got, how we got here? So I was hired as the Parks and Recreation Director back in late July of 2017. At that time, when I was interviewed, one of the questions was asked is, you know, what's your first goal? If you were hired, what would you do? And many of you guys up here heard me say this and talk about it. But the big thing for me was putting in place a master plan, a master plan for the Parks Department so that we know where we're going, how we're getting there, and it can change. And it does. Every year, we update it, we change it. The Hecker Community Center came much sooner than I ever anticipated it to come. But that's a great place for us and the community to know where the Parks Department is, how we're getting there, what do we need to do, and then update it every year as our community changes and grows. You know, new interest sparked. Who would have thought pickleball would be like the number-one sport? That's something that we've kind of made changes to. So for me, my goal is always to hopefully stay here and achieve everything in that master plan. But it's a good way for, again, our staff, our community, and everybody to understand where we're at, what's our plan, and how are we going to get there. So with that being said, aquatics was my background. It's what I know most about. Probably not as much as I used to 10 years ago, but I have great staff that knows even more about aquatics. But that was my background, and that's what really got me into the Parks and Recreation field. At that time, I knew, working with Sedalia Parks and Rec before and then being gone for a little bit, that our pools were built and opened in 1997. Aquatic facilities, their life expectancy is usually 20 to 25 years most, and then you're putting in a couple million dollars to update them, to fix pipes, to repair concrete. So I knew at that time that we really needed to get a good look at both pools and see where we're at, how much time we have. A pool, I'll tell you every year when you get ready to start, an older pool, you're kind of holding your breath at the very beginning of startup, hoping there's no major pipe busted or anything like that. I apologize. So with that, in 2018, the Parks Department approved a $250,000 investment in Liberty Pool that would give us five to 10 more years. We had done some studies in 2017 and 2018 with Norton and Schmidt and Wilson Company. And at that time, that's when they talked to us about Liberty Pool. We were well aware Dave Moore had been with the Parks Department for 30 years. Again, aquatic was his background as the Parks Superintendent. He knew of issues that we were having, but we really wanted an engineer to come in and kind of look at us, give us a report, and kind of give us a really good picture, solid picture of where we're at. So at that time, Park Board looked at the issues that we had upon us. They looked at investing in $250,000 in Liberty Pool. At that time, engineers thought that would give us five to 10 years. Here we are, and we're still doing well. And I really think that till 2028, Liberty Pool could still be going as long as we are upkeeping and doing the things that we're doing every year. I do think that we can get those 10 years. So we put that $250,000 in Liberty Pool. Centennial Pool is a different. My rule has always said it, you know, depending on how much of the value of it is, you shouldn't put in more than 20% if you know that, you know, it's not a brand-new facility like the Hecker that just opened. We knew that this was in the life. Centennial Pool exceeded over a half a million dollars. Centennial Pool at that time was only valued at like $3.5 million. So for us, we didn't think that was a good way to invest in the tax dollars and for something that would only give us three to five years of putting in a half a million dollars. Engineer costs would have been over $30,000. The bathhouse, if you've used Liberty, you walk in, you can see the roof is rotting. There's some shift change and some foundation issues over there. The new roof was with the sunroof and everything, and there was around $95,000. Again, this is from back from 2019, not current numbers. Shade structure, $55,000. The sliding repaired, $45,000. Sun deck, chemical room, and then some pipes that were leaking and starting to bust underneath. So we took it as we will just keep putting Band-Aids on and repairing it. If you look at our budget, pool expenses were up, and that was because we had to continue to make improvements just to kind of keep us going on each year. But we did that. So then we started to search for a new aquatic facility site. We couldn't afford two pools. We made that very clear during the Yes/Yes campaign in 2019 that there was no way that we could afford to build two outdoor aquatic facilities. It's very unusual for a city the size of Sedalia to have two outdoor aquatic facilities anyways. That's one thing I want to point out. If you go to Warrensburg, Edenly Summit, Raytown, the only cities in the state of Missouri that have multiple outdoor aquatic facilities will be Kansas City, Springfield, Columbia, and then more on the St. Louis area. So that was one thing that we really wanted to stress is when the time came, we were only going to afford to do one outdoor aquatic facility. Park Board has pushed from the very beginning that this site needs to be on the east side. Don't even look in anywhere else, look on the east side. In 2020, we bought a house at 1324 East 16th Street, which is right next to Centennial Pool, with hopes, it was, I will be honest, it was a decision that the house came for sale, and we talked to Park Board, and I said, hey, this would be a great investment. Hopefully, we could build at Centennial when Centennial closes. So we did purchase that house. We do still own that house. 2021, we had rest plans drawn out, everything, and with the ditch and the water running in there, there was not enough room over at Centennial Pool to build a pool large enough for us when we do do a new one, a new aquatic facility. But yes, we do still own that house at 1324 East 16th, and we will eventually keep that house. And when we make the improvements over at Centennial with the pickleball courts and the splash pad and everything, it'll help us to have more parking. But size-wise, it was not right. So again, 2022 still continues. Our new location on the east side, we weren't getting very lucky. We were finding small pieces here and there, but nothing large enough that we could actually build the size of a outdoor aquatic facility that we needed. 2023, new information was given that I was told about. I'm on the New Southern's property. It was actually, I believe, 2021 that the city of Sedalia received information from DNR, letting them know that it was a typo error. There's emails and reports for that information that it wasn't feet, it was inches. And there's a big difference between 12 inches of soil and 12 feet of soil. In 2023, it was in middle of February, late February, that I heard of that information, and then I started speaking to the Public Works Director at that time, asking about that, because those that know me, once I hear something, I start to get excited and want to know more information. So at that time, it was shared with me that this site, even though there still is some contaminated spots on the site, would be an ideal place for us to be able to build a new aquatic facility. So the Old Southern's property, to me, it was city-owned. It was on the east side. It was an eyesore to the community, and it was something that we could bring pride to. For me, this was a good opportunity. I started talking to City Administrator Kelvin Shaw, asking if it was something, I knew there was, you know, some other plans maybe in place and other things that the city was looking at doing. But to me, this was a great site for us to be able to put a new aquatic facility. Size-wise, it was good. It was across from the junior high where we could work with them at the end of summer, doing some swimming parties, maybe at the beginning of the school year. To me, there were so many different things. And also being for our Parks Department. Is this like the best piece of property? No, it's going to take money. It's going to take extra money to clean it up and to get it. But as a Parks Department, I think that's very important for us as part of the city is to take a piece of property that's not that great and fix it up and invest in the community and make it something that they can have a lot of pride for. So if you look to the side on the right-hand side, that kind of shows that was information that Brenda had shared with me, showing like the locations and the spots of where it was inches and not feet. So aquatics and bowling. It was September of 2023 that we announced that we would be putting in the new aquatic facility at the Old Southern's property. We talked about it at that time and stated, if you read the newspaper, other things, that there was something else in the works. It just was information that we couldn't share. There were still things that we were talking about and doing. And then it was announced this March that Sue Hecker would be giving the money to the memory lane. This would be 16 lanes is what we're hoping for. Cost come in, that might adjust. I don't want to be set on 16 lanes, but it would be nice to have street 16 and memory lanes. So this is a fully donated memory lane bowling alley where the revenue would go to the aquatic facility and park facility. And that was the one thing we were stressing was something else was coming. We knew that budget-wise, if we took and built this new aquatic facility, that would be around not $60 to $8 million. Our capital improvements budget each year is between $500,000 and $700,000. If we didn't have this bowling alley, that would take every single dime of our capital improvements to pay for the aquatic facility. We would not be able to continue on with the master plan and do things, maybe small little projects, but nothing large. I worked for Warrensburg Parks and Recreation, and that's what happened there. A lot of people talk about their community center. It wasn't the community center. It was NASA's aquatic facility. Once they built that, that took out the whole capital improvement. I didn't want to do that. I keep speaking about the master plan. You know, we have lots of things that we want to get accomplished and that we want to do for the community. So when this was going on and the whole bowling alley, it was a great opportunity for us to know that the revenue from the bowling alley could go to the aquatic facility and to pay, help pay that debt service. Now we know that $8 million, and again, I want to say we don't want to exceed $8 million. That's the, here's the revenue part. That the cost of the aquatic center debt, taking the loan out, is almost $630,000. So we have done some data, some research, talking to the other bowling alleys on cost and everything and how much we can bring in. But one thing I want to stress is there's not a land fee. We're not buying, purchasing land, and we're not paying for a facility. Yes, paying to maintain it, we're paying to run it, operate it. But compared to someone coming in as an investor, we don't have those expenses. So the revenue coming in, we still would bring in, we'd still be about $120,000 short, and that's okay. We are comfortable setting aside up to, well, I'd say $200,000 more, but you don't know if the numbers are accurate and if we're going to rent as many bowling shoes as we think that we are. And we've been very conservative on these numbers. You'll see in there, we're not talking a lot about leagues and birthday parties and all of that stuff. Kelvin and I have worked on this, same as we did with this community center. And we're, you know, going on year three of the community center, and we're doing really well there as well. So I would hope people know that I love my job. We really run the numbers. We've been, like I said, I've been the director for coming on eight years. We've done a lot of great things in the community, but we always strive to stay in the positive and to do things correctly. I want to stay here and hopefully retire as Parks Director. I tell Kelvin all the time that I wouldn't want to do something if I wasn't comfortable with it financially. So these numbers, they're there to kind of show you where we think that we would be. Budgeting of that $500,000 to $700,000, $200,000. It's $200,000. We thought it would be more than that budgeting out of the Parks Department. So we're comfortable, like I said, putting in each year, seeing that we might have to bring in $200,000 out of the capital improvement. So other things I want to kind of just throw out there that we've been, we've been talking a lot about is when we do the RFQ, it's going to be together, the bowling alley and the aquatic facility, a package deal. They're going to be built together. It'll help us be able to get the best buck. You know, parking lot-wise, we talked about the concessions for the bowling alley. You know, we want it where there's a window connected to the patio of the pool so we don't have to have a concession at the pool. The pool's only open for less than 100, 100, sorry, 100 days of the year. There's no reason for us to spend half a million dollars on a concession stand when we have this bowling alley right next that we can utilize, you can have a window they can come up to. The other thing in the RFQ, we've said a lot this whole time, is an environmental engineer on staff for whoever gets this bid. That is one thing that's very important. We want to make sure that we know that the soil is being disposed properly. There'll be things that we're working with DNR constantly. So they will have to have an environmental engineer on staff as well, because we know, again, this property isn't a clean property, but it's one that we're excited and we think would be best for our community for us to be able to work together and clean it up and make it be another piece of this community that's very prideful. Any questions? Mr. Cross?
Do we know for sure how deep we have to go to take out that, to eliminate the soil?
How deep that we have to dig?
Yeah.
Well, it's going to depend on the facility. And we're not going to put the diving well in the worst piece of property either. And of all that, the one picture that I showed where it was, let's see if I can go back one more. You know, it kind of shows like you can see like the worst parts and the best parts. That's one thing when you work with, I'm not the engineer. I'm not the architect. That's one thing we will work with them on. You know, they see this report, they go through it. We're going to design it correctly. We're not going to put the diving well in the worst spot. You know, that's going to be in the spot that's located. So that's something that we'll work with with the architects to do that. I'm not an architect. I can show you what my drawing and what it looks like. But when we get further in that process after the RFQ, that's something they would be, they earn their money. Other questions?
Within the bowling alley itself, what kind of concessions and amenities are you thinking about having in there since you're not going to do a concession stand at the?
Yeah, so we want it to be a grill. So there's like hamburgers, fries, pizza. You know, you still get your ice cream, snow cones, those things that kids love at the pool, adults, too. But there would be no alcohol. That's one thing that Sue had in her when she said that she wanted to give that she did not want alcohol in the bowling alley. Just make sure that's clear.
Does Southern's have any responsibility for the conditions of this property?
No. I mean, it's owned by the city now. So I would say the city is completely, and Kelvin might know more, the mayor.
Yeah, it was originally railroad property. So, and railroad is really what created the contamination. So there, there might be some opportunity to use the super fund that they call it, but there's restricted covenants when we purchase the property that says we can't do this and that. And so to, to work through those, basically what we have to do is we have to, as Amy mentioned, is we have to hire an architect or an engineer and that specializes in environmental. They will lay out the plan. Excuse me, work with the Department of Natural Resources. Department of Natural Resources will have to approve that plan. If it's, if we need to go outside those restricted covenants, then there's a, there's a provision in the agreement when we bought it from the railroad that we can go back to them with DNR's approval, and they can release that restricted covenant. It's a process that, I'll admit, I have not been through before, but I know that there's experts that have, so.
There's also lots of grants out there when you're cleaning up an area like this that can help offset costs as well.
And I guess I would add to that. This is a property that's been in the middle of our city that's been a mess for a long time. of our city, that's been a mess for a long time, and, uh, and that's really why the city went after it, to, to get it cleaned up. I mean, if not the city going after it to clean it up, it would be a mess for decades to come, or even centuries to come, that nobody was really going to touch it. So, uh, as Director Appleby, um, mentioned, is, is this is an opportunity for us to take a bad piece of property and turn into something very positive for the community. We were going to have to clean it up anyway, so this just gives us that opportunity. That's my opinion.
And the last thing I'd want to say is too, because when we released the information of the new aquatic facility, we said it would open in twenty twenty-five, but I will be honest, that's not going to happen, it probably is going to be more summer twenty twenty-six, um, so I want to make sure that I'm clear on that, and, um, everyone hears that from me as well. Any other questions?
I just want to add, Amy, I'm kind of, not as, just in fact, it's going to be on the inside, so I think it's going to draw people over there, you know, we're going to get the Taco Bell over there, I, I think it's just going to be, be better.
Yeah, we're very, I'm very excited for that.
Yeah.
It's a good location, like I said, it's not the perfect location, um, but something I'm excited to see what we can do and, and what we can do, and then, and then down the road, um, the improvements we'll make over at Centennial Pool as well, so, good things are coming.
Well, you know, it'll be a regional draw, I think that's one thing that maybe a lot of people don't understand, hecker is a regional draw.
Yes.
You know, we dealt with people from Blackwater this year, we'll have kids coming in from four or five different counties, uh, just to use the hecker, and it'll be the same thing with that aquatics center, it'll, it'll make us a destination point, it'll help us with tourism.
That's what we're hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on here, uh, second item is as previously discussed in the budget process, staff requested an asphalt favor, so we need to approve and accept the quote from Foley Equipment.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the quote.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a great control for asphalt favor.
Second reading.
A motion to second for second reading, although I need council discussion. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a great control for asphalt favor.
Final passage.
I have a motion to second for final passage of the ordinance, does any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, and Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Third item I have tonight is advised and requested from our Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission, uh, they have requested that we have approved, they've requested that we remove the no parking zone at three oh two East Third Street, uh, so we have an ordinance repealing that ordinance.
All right, call for the ordinance, uh, reading of the ordinance repealing ordinance number eight five five eight.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-five. An ordinance repealing ordinance number eight five five eight by removing the no parking sign on the east side of South Massachusetts, between East Third and the alley between East Third and East Fourth in the city of today in Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
A motion to second for the second reading of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-five. An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-five fifty-eight by removing the no parking sign on the east side of South Massachusetts, between East Third and the alley, between East Third and East Fourth in the city of today in Missouri.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Fourth item, the staff has been working to provide access to infrastructure for the future development, as well as decommissioned lagoons that are scattered across the town. The Interstate Studios is granting us an easement in the back of their property to have gone to existing main, and we need to approve that, uh, that easement.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the permanent utility easement.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-six. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utilities, utility easement for sanitary sewer main project.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-six. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sanitary sewer main project.
Final passage.
Second. A motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Fifth item I have tonight is big bikes across Missouri on the Katy, has once again occurring in Sedalia, and we need to suspend the prohibition of parking and camping in Liberty Park, overnight camping, or, you know, overnight parking and camping, there we go, in Liberty Park on June third and October seventh.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance allowing the overnight camping.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-seven. An ordinance allowing overnight camping, parking in Liberty Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event on Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four, and Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
A motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-seven. An ordinance allowing overnight camping, parking in Liberty Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event, on Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four, and Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Final passage.
Second.
A motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, any council discussion?
I have a question. I know they've done this in the years past, um, I just want to come out, now, they don't, they don't allow drinking, alcohol.
No, uh, I believe it was the first year, or maybe the first two years, they asked for, uh, for us to allow drinking, uh, or alcohol in the park, and, uh, last couple of years, maybe three years, they haven't asked for that, and they have not this time, so, so there's, there's nothing in the ordinance that allows alcohol, they're still appropriate.
All right, very good. Any further council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Sixth item I have tonight is an annexation and utility service agreement for four zero five zero Bluegrass Drive.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the annexation and utility services agreement.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-eight. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to property located at forty fifty Bluegrass Drive to the city of today's sanitary sewer and water distribution system.
Second reading.
A motion and a second for the second reading, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-eight. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to property located at forty fifty Bluegrass Drive to the city of today's sanitary sewer and water distribution system.
Final passage.
Second.
A motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Seventh item I have tonight is we currently allow, have an ordinance that allows for liquid waste haulers to dump at the central plant. With that plant being restored and improved, we need to amend the code to allow our other waste plants to accept those disposal sites.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance amending article, uh, let's see, VI, section sixty, section sixty-three oh one of the city code.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four sixty-nine. An ordinance of the city of today in Missouri amending Article Six, Chapter Sixty, Section sixty dash three oh one of the city code for the purpose of updating liquid waste disposal sites.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Ninth item I have is, last year, we were awarded a grant to replace several blocks of sidewalks in the northern part of our community. We need to accept and approve the scope of work from Wilson &amp; Co. to design this project.
All right, call for the order, reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the scope of services.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four seventy-one. An ordinance approving and accepting the scope of services for the north central neighborhood connects to dire revitalization project.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four seventy-one. An ordinance approving and accepting the scope of services for the north central neighborhood connects to dire revitalization project.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four seventy-one. An ordinance approving and accepting the scope of services for the north central neighborhood connects to dire revitalization project.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
And Marshall is absent, seven yes, one absent.
All right. And the final item I have tonight is, last year, council approved matching funds of the forty thousand dollars with the Lions Club to have our city name and logo painted on the sixteenth street water tower. Lions Club quickly raised those funds with the assistance of several other stakeholders and service clubs and organizations in our community. After discussions with community members and donors, they felt it would be more desirable to have not just the logo painted on twice on that tower, but three times and twice on the downtown tower, still coming under budget for use of public funds. Tonight, we need to authorize the agreement with Viking Paintings to complete this project.
All right, call for the ordinance, a reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for the painting of the city logos on the water tower.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four seventy-two. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for painting of city logos on both water towers.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion?
Uh, when this first came up, I believe they wanted the city to come up with forty thousand dollars, and so now it's down to, what, seventeen? So, that's a, that's good, that's a bargain.
What happened about, I think the reason we tabled this a few months ago is because they were saying that the whole tower had, the whole bowl had to be repainted.
No, they weren't, they weren't saying that, it was, we had a bid alternate put in to, to paint the, the background, if you will, and, um, uh, council, uh, did not want to go forward with that, and, uh, so we, we pulled back, we, we did talk to them, talked to the, to the staff at the water tower, and looked at the last inspection, they believed that, um, you know, there's probably another, oh, twenty years or so left in the, in the background paint before it has to be done. We also talked to the vendor, and the vendor said, if the background does need to be painted, they can paint around the logo, so it's, it's nothing lost if, if that was done, so.
The other council, a question.
Um, having spoken to some of the, the people that voted me into this position, um, they are against this, and so I am their voice, and so I would have to be against it at this time. Um, some of the reasoning that they were giving me is that they believe there's other things that this may need to go forward rather than painting a water tower.
The other anybody else? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, yep, very good. All right, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four seventy-two. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for painting of city logos on both water towers.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any further council discussion? Roll call please.
Hiller.
No.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
No.
Bliss.
No.
Robinson.
No.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, and Bogus.
No.
Two yes, five no, one absent.
All right, let's see, that would be a failure. All right, very good. Uh, moving along, let's see, I think Chairman Oldham, up next we have call of safety, Chairman Robson here on the floor.
Um, as a continued follow-up from the last couple of council meetings, uh, Chief Urban will speak about the location of a fire station over several of our places.
It's a synopsis.
Synopsis.
And I will apologize, I forgot to put it out and have my notes with me, so, um, if I stumble, that's, that's my reasoning, it was a busy day today. So, first and foremost, this presentation is, uh, primary objective for this is to fulfill council's request for just giving you options on station locations and staffing. Um, so basically, same objectives that we had the last time I was here, basically, we want to provide exceptional care of service to all of our citizens in the community, um, to, to ensure protection of life and property to the best of our ability, ensure the health and safety of our members to the best of our ability, and we're going to accomplish this while remaining fiscally responsible and not creating an undue burden to the, to the taxpayer. We've had to use resources wisely by ensuring they are used for facilities that will serve us for the next fifty years, we don't want something that's only going to last us a couple of years and then it's money wasted. We've had to forecast growth and expansion, to ensure, ensure facilities are placed appropriately in order to provide that exceptional service for the next fifty years, and ensure our decisions today are sustainable tomorrow, preventing layoffs, burnouts, and/or station closures, uh, which will result in a, um, waste of taxpayer dollars. Before you receive these four options that we've come up with for moving forward, option one, uh, moving forward with the rebuilding of Central Fire at its current location, option two is moving forward with a two-station model with the new station constructed north of the railroad, say, option three, moving forward with finding a suitable location to move to a three-station model with new stations constructed on the north and south side of the, um, railroad tracks. Option four is use of the Federal Center Fire Protection District facility as a temporary location. Option one, um, is recommended if unable to fund the, the three-station model, um, which would be building right behind the Central Fire Station or, or there, or about. Um, opposed to this is there's no additional cost in staffing, no additional apparatus cost, building's going to cost about five million dollars, there's no land acquisition. And what we've shown already with our heat map is that we have quality, uh, coverage will still allowing us to adjust with growth in any direction. Projections lead us to believe that the, the move to two to four stations in the, within the near future, with the future expansions of the new core property and, and items coming up in the southwest of town. The cons of this is the potential need to reroute responses north if a train is present on the, on the current railroad tracks. Um, this is mitigated with a bridge or the addition of a second bridge. Portions of the south, southwest, west, northwest, and the airport are outside of the average estimated four-minute response times, as you've seen from our heat map. Um, however, with staffing and including sixty, um, sixteen personnel that are in Portions of the south, southwest, west, northwest, and the airport are outside of the average estimated four-minute response times, as you've seen from our heat map. Um, however, with staffing, it includes sixty, um, sixteen personnel that are in the grant of budget, headquarters would be a three-person engine, two-person ladder, two-person squad, the central fire on Hancock would be a three-person engine and a two-person squad. This is where the minimum of twelve people working on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and this plan only works with a two-station model with this staff. Here's our map, again with all calls, our heat map, and you've seen this before, um, the dark blue, um, is the fire headquarters, and the light blue is our central fire station. And those are the, the four, four-minute response times on average. Option two is not recommended, not recommended on, based on our data, uh, moving forward with a two-station model with a new station constructed north in a suitable location to the community. The pros is there's still, again, no additional cost in staffing, no additional cost in apparatus, single station would still cost us five million dollars. It would improve response times for the north east portion of the community, the six hundred and seventy-seven residents that I spoke to, I spoke about earlier. Um, the reduction in potential issues responding north of the railroad due to a train traffic does not eliminate them. That truck still has to respond to the south side of the railroad tracks for house, uh, fires and medicals, so it may not always be stationed on the north side. Consequences, potential land acquisition, we'd have to find someplace to put it, um, potential for the need to reroute responses south if the train is present, increased response times to the south and east of the twelve hundred and forty-three residential homes east of engineering that we discussed earlier. Uh, this station apparatus would still be responsible for all calls east of ground, that is its run box, it's where that is, is responsible for. Train concerns would still exist for the northern portion, um, but already, uh, if the truck is already out on a call. So that truck runs about fifteen hundred calls a year, not always on the north side of the track, so it may not even be in the station. Um, this is kind of what it looks like, um, where we put the fire station kind of center in the, um, north side, I left the light blue of the central run box for central fire, um, and you can see where it, it does not overlap into the south, southeast, um, and well, far east, um, parts of the city. So that's what it would look like if we just built a station over on the north side, um, and didn't replace, um, central fire or go south. Option three, this is the preferred, um, what, what I would prefer, this is what I would recommend if we have funding available. This is what we started with three years ago, in a, in a three-station model. Um, the pros is improved response time to all areas of the community, um, reduction in potential issues responding to all areas of the community due to train traffic, because we would have a station over there, does not eliminate it. Um, additional personnel improves our capabilities on fire protection, increased safety for citizens and personnel, allows us for more calls for service to be answered at any one time, um, and reduces potential catastrophic loss of all stations and equipment in a natural disaster. Um, even though the tornado, um, threat for the night is limited, it still makes me nervous. Um, the cons of this is potential land, uh, multiple land acquisitions, we don't know what we're going to have to cost for money if we can find property to put them over there. Um, it wouldn't cost an additional apparatus, and the dual-station construction cost a ten million dollars, and the ongoing operational costs, that includes personnel, insurance, utilities, upkeep, and repairs.
Matt, can I ask you one second?
Yes.
It would be a million a year for personnel on a, or something like that.
I'm, I'm right there.
Okay, I was, I was, I was, I was, sorry, thank you.
I, I knew you, somebody was going to ask. So, the, the minimum staff that we would have to run the three-station model, um, would be twelve additional staff. Um, the, the shift would go from thirteen personnel to seventeen, minimum staffing would move from ten to thirteen, um, these twelve, um, would be the minimum needed to run three stations. Um, six personnel we already have accounted for in the grant slash budget, um, we would need six additional personnel on top of that to go to a three-station model, um, excuse me, and this is the minimum staff that we would need to do it. Estimated cost for those twelve personnel is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and increases annually.
Is there a map? Are we going to see a map for this option two?
Yes, it is coming. So, um, what I did is tried to break down what our personnel would look like for the staff, um, with the twelve minimum, we would have a headquarters station of a three-person engine, two-person ladder, and then both the north and south stations preferred would have four-person engine companies. Um, this is with again, with the minimum staffing of thirteen personnel. If additional personnel are available, if they're not on vacation or Kelly days, um, it would give us additional personnel to, um, staff a squad. This is option B, it's not much preferred, but running a three-person engine, a two-person ladder, then the north station would have a three-person engine, a two-person squad, and then the south station would have a three-person engine and company in it. Again, this is with a minimum staffing of thirteen, and we would need to dish, two additional people to be on duty to get the, to get the, uh, second squad on duty, or second squad in service. So basically, we need fifteen on duty to run both squads. Um, and then I put this one, this is the, if I had, if, I mean, if I had a money tree, this is the staffing that we would have, um, with a three-station model. It would basically put us to fifteen staff on duty, um, that's five, five, and five, uh, five at each station. Um, it would put us three per engine, um, a ladder truck, two on the ladder truck, two on a squad, and two on a squad. I have them broke down, um, headquarters, north station, south station, we would have to look at the data on, again, where those squads would need to be staffed. I just put them in here so you guys could see what, what it would basically break down to. This is with, with a minimum of staffing of fifteen, um, that's fifteen on duty every day. Um, this means breaks, that basically breaks down to nineteen personnel on shift, this would mean that we'd have to hire eighteen people. That's one point two seven five million dollars annually. Um, six of those people are still out on the ground or in our budget, so that's twelve additional of the six that we already have out. As you can see, it's very expensive, and that does go up every year. That's what it looks like. Any questions on it?
So we still don't get high school covered?
No, we would not get the high schools covered until we move very, very far south to maybe the Cambridge area, um, to catch the, to catch the high school. If we were to try to put it into, anywhere in the, uh, fire headquarters box to catch, um, just the school, we'd have significant overlap to the headquarters station.
We still, a little bit of a gap on the far east.
Mm-hmm. Again, we can't cover it all without six, seven stations.
Well, it's not that they're not covered, it's that it's going to be five minutes instead of.
Yeah, it's going to be four and a half minutes, or instead of four minutes, or five minutes instead of four minutes. So option four, um, the use of the Pettit County Fire Protection District Station Seven, um, as a temporary location. The pros of this is the facility is already there, and it has a place to house our apparatus, allows more time to weigh options on the bridge and the third station. The cons are, it resides outside the city limits, it delays our response to calls south and southeast of Cudelia because it's still responsible for those, those calls. Um, the apparatus would still be, I'm sorry, I'm re-reading. Um, we would still need living quarters at about eight, eighty thousand dollars, still need power, water, and sewer hooked up, a rental fee for electric, fire hydrant installation, and the county, in our discussions, the county would retain all improvements to include the living quarters, we would not be able to resell the trailer and get some of our money back, they would retain that trailer. That is your run box for the, uh, Station Seven compared to the central fire station as it sits. One point, our four-minute response time from the, from Station Seven gets us just this side of, um, Henry on Ohio. So what we're currently doing, in the event of a train blocking the rail crossings, the crews from central fire station will respond to the north side, and they stage at the, um, Dollar General or in that area. Um, and it will remain there until the train clears the railroad tracks or it is called to another call. So if it goes on a medical or a fire, it will respond to where it needs to go. The headquarters engine drops from a four-person company to a three-person company, and that engine then responds to the central fire station and it's staffed it. The ladder truck at fire headquarters then becomes a three-person ladder truck, and it runs, runs all the calls in its regular nor, uh, run box. We are still notified by SPD or, um, um, the dispatch or Union Pacific if a train has stopped on the railroad tracks. Um, the Union Pacific is not a guarantee, after talking with them, their dispatch, their emergency dispatch, there's like twenty states, I mean, they are just, they got everywhere the Union Pacific is, they've got railroad tracks, they are monitoring trains, so it could be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes delayed before they can actually make a phone call to dispatch and say, hey, they've got a train in emergency. So we are currently in the process of putting a camera up at Housel Park, um, it should be in within the next four to five weeks, um, that will show, um, it will give us a live feed into both stations and to dis, uh, joint communications, that when our fire trucks leave out, they can check to see if there's a train there, or they can monitor it. Um, engineer is our main thoroughfare from Hancock Station to the north side, so if they see that that train is blocking it for whatever reason or is coming through, um, we will be notified. Um, I also have to give some special credit to, to Mr. Work, he is also working on a plan that when the trains come through, all of the lights, the signals flash on Main Street, there is a way to get that signal, I hope I'm not putting words into his mouth, there is a way to get that signal to alert in both uni, uh, joint communications and the stations that tell us that there is a train, there is a train coming through. Won't tell us that it stopped, but it will tell us that there is a train coming through, which also gives us another heads up that, that we may need to change our response plan. Um, additional cameras on order, but we are looking at five to six months before they get in here, and it is just basically a back order with cameras. And again, we are actively engaging with our community partners to find a temporary station location if that needs to be the case. I feel, though, that what we are doing right now, we are more prepared to get to the north side of, of the tracks than we were six months ago, a year ago, that we have ever been. Um, the ability to be able to view the railroad tracks, be able to get notifications inside the stations is far more superior than what we, what we had in the past. In the past, we would drive, the Hancock station would drive to engineer and see that there is a train in the way, then they'd have to turn around and go back to the Washington Street Biaduct to use it. Now this gives our, our crews to know that there is a train blocking, they should already be on the north side, and our fire crews are then now changing their response protocols to get to the north side to help them. So in conclusion, regardless of the station locations, term, temporary or permanent, we still need to fix the bridge, um, and that is something that, that we need to do. We have to have a, 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 a means to get over, if all of our trucks are on the south side or if all of our trucks are on the north side, we still have to be able to get across the track in the event of a stop train. The next question is, is how will we fund and staff station builds? At minimum, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the staff, um, and that is our minimum of, basically, the minimum number that we can run it effectively and safely, and that will go up every year. We have five million dollars per station, if you want to build two, that's ten million dollars, additional engine for the third station, possible land purchases, operating costs for the station, gas, electric, personnel costs, upkeep, the insurance costs for the additional buildings and equipment and apparatus are all things that we need to consider, we need to take into consideration, it's not just something that we can go through a building up. If, um, if we want to fully staff both squads on the three-station model, we have to go to eighteen additional staff at one point two seven five million. There is no way that we can staff both squads with, without, without that number, um, and those staffing costs, again, go up. My question is, is should we consider remaining at the current station locations and adding a second bridge, making sure that we repair the first bridge? The funds set aside for that third station would go a long way to a, to additional bridge for a no weight limit bridge, um, and that takes all the concerns for the Washington Street Biaduct, which we have with aerial apparatus that can't use it. Things that you need to discuss, I mean, things that we need to think about. Um, again, if I had the money tree, my recommendation to you would be, go to three stations, hire the staff to put them in there, and let's get better as a community fire service. Now I'm open for questions. Comments or concerns?
I've got one.
You've got one? I don't believe it. I think you've got two. You've got two in you.
I've just got one, I think, uh, you know, we've got a commitment, we're extending water and sewer to Fisher's project, it's going to hit, and at some point in time, it's going to start adding a lot of property available, at least possibly a lot of construction to the southwest, and, and if we are going to do that four station, which we've given a three-station, option three or whatever.
Yeah, so if we went to a three-
We, we can still adjust that to the west if we needed to get a footprint further west.
We could, we could with the four station, but once you put them in the ground, that's, that's, that's where they're at.
Well, I, I figured that one out a long time.
I, I know, I, I, I'm just saying that-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying we need to kind of think about that because-
Yes.
-we committed sewer and water to that project.
That is absolutely correct.
We need to look at that too, because it's my understanding, as that project occurs, it's going to be in the city limits, right?
That is correct, and it is something to consider.
The one thing I think we haven't really considered is that, that's my one comment.
And I'll get him before he gives you another comment.
Okay.
I thank you for all of the work that you're putting in for this team, I truly do. Um, to me personally, I believe that the temporary fix of, should we need to go and park on Dollar General, because we know there's a train coming, that shows that we're trying to work and trying to figure this out until we can get these bridge, our bridges, put into place. And again, I thank you for all of the work that you've done, I think your crew that's helped you put all of this together, I truly appreciate it.
It, it has been a team effort, um, and it, but it is not just the fire department, it's not just my deputy chief, it's not just the, the, the guys that you see back here are very interested in, on, on wanting to go to three stations, and they, they have a, I mean, they have, they have a dog in the fight, I mean, they, they want those personnel to help them on, on fires and such. But it's not just my department, um, Administrator Shaw, Assistant Administrator, uh, Work, all of, and I, I don't like to give them credit, but even Mr. Davies has, has thrown in some helpful information occasionally. Um, it is truly a team effort, and it is, you know, the Police Department Chief, uh, Woolery has been very gracious in helping us with cameras and letting us tie on to some of the contracts they already have in place, who our cameras are coming in cheaper than what we thought they were going to. So it is honestly a team effort. Um, Chief Woolery has notified all of his officers that as soon as they see a train stop, their first call is, is to just dispatching to us to let us know so we can implement our plan and move everything. We are truly working together as a city as a whole to try to, to try to mitigate this. And unfortunately, until the, till the bridges are fixed or a third station is built, it is, it is a temporary fix. I think this is the most economical way to, to do this, and I think it is the, the best use of resources versus trying to temporarily build a fire station or use another facility, um, and, and incur those costs that we could put into bridges and we can put into actual brick and mortar fire station. Anybody else?
I would add, um, we have been working on the bridge as well, um, we have engaged, um, Mr. Davies has reached out to one of the engineering firms that we work with, HDR, they do have, uh, structural engineers that are available, they are coming down, I think, next week, uh, or this week, uh, yeah, sometime this week to lay eyes on the bridge, um, and, um, make, pull their recommendations together. Um, also, uh, I was able to finally get ahold of somebody at the railroad that would call me back, and-
They're very hard to get ahold of.
Yeah, they are. Um, and, but, uh, once I got him, got ahold of him, it was a very good conversation. Uh, they are very interested in an, in an additional, uh, they call it a grade change crossing as opposed to an at-grade crossing, um, to the point to where they even talked about it, there might be an opportunity for them to participate in cost. Most certainly, they believe that there might be grant funds available for that, and that would be supportive or, um, you know, sign on to a letter of support to, um, to the, uh, Federal Railroad Administration, uh, to see if we could get another grant, um, much like the, the Phil Grant that we get for the railroad spur. So, um, I think, you know, that's not going to be a quick option, I'll, I'll guarantee you that, um, but, you know, it, uh, is looking more and more like that's a viable option, and that would be, um, uh, in my view, a, a huge, huge win for the community as a whole, in, in total of, you know, not only solving this issue, but, uh, connecting the community better, um, create more, uh, even as Chief Irwin mentioned, the current Washington Street Bridge, you can't put a ladder truck over it anyway, so, um, if we did a, a no limit, or, I guess there's no such thing as no limit, but, um, the, uh-
Only in Oldham.
Yeah. Uh, a, a, a bridge that doesn't have the weight limits that Washington does in, in-
Preferably one without a top.
Yeah. So, so anyway, I just wanted to give you that update, that, that is at least moving a little bit and looks more promising than it has prior to, uh, late last week.
And unless counsel wants another update, I'm not planning on giving another one, this is kind of where we're at. Unless there's something specifically you want to hear, give me a call and, and, and I'll bring it to you guys as a group. Because I don't-
I want, I want, I just want to say that I think, I, like I told you Thursday, I, I believe with the police and the fire, everybody working together, we're going, we're going to protect the north side.
Yes, sir.
If they're protecting, and I can, I feel a little more comfortable about that, but it's just a temporary deal. This bridge will be fixed, there will be access across that bridge again.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, you know, we're, at least we're going in the right direction.
Chief Irwin, would you mind emailing out counsel a copy of your presentation?
I absolutely will.
Anything further, counsel?
I'm just going to hang out.
All right.
Uh, the next two are me, I think.
Chief, you, you've done a wonderful job with this.
Thank you, counsel.
It's an amazing, it's an amazing.
Well, it's not just me, it is, it is my staff.
I understand, but you've given us four options, a couple of which are better than others, and you, and so that's what we need, that and the budget. You, you take those things and you work together and you figure out how to do it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, we need to formally acknowledge receipt of a report on the loggers.
I'm going to let Mr. Shaw handle this.
Yeah.
I got the two after this.
Yeah. We, we've been working for quite some time, as you all, um, may recall, we, uh, had a, uh, fire pension plan that was administered by, internally by a fighter pension board. Uh, we have moved all of the firefighters to loggers, the local area government, uh, retirement system, and, um, uh, so all of the current people are on loggers now, it's, uh, in my view, a much better plan, and also agreed with that, uh, until we moved them over to that. Um, so that left the, the legacy plan that is still out there and still has to be managed, um, and, uh, if you remember, we took the police pension plan, the old legacy plan, and turned it over to loggers. And what loggers does with that is, is they will do their study and they will tell us, okay, you put it on a fifteen-year amortization, and the police pension plan was much worse as far as funded, um, but after fifteen years, you make those payments every year, after fifteen years, it's loggers' profit. Um, whether the, it makes enough money or not, it's, it's up to loggers to, to cover any shortfall. So we've been working with loggers to do the same thing with the firefighters, they have come back with their, um, their actuarial plan, and it may change some, uh, because they'll have to update it, but this, this one says it's four hundred and six thousand dollars per year on a fifteen-year amortization, and that will fund that, and the firefighters will not have to worry about the previous promises or any of those kinds of things, it will be backed by the, what, seven or eight billion dollars that's in the loggers.
A lot of zero.
So, uh, there's several more steps that have to happen over time here, it'll take a, take a few more months to get this done, but one of the things that, uh, we have to do is, is we have to recognize that we are acknowledged receipt of that actuary plan, it has to be, I think it has to be, um, uh, accepted for forty-five days before we can take the next step, so.
I would entertain a motion in a second to acknowledge and make notice.
Hello?
All right, thank you, counsel.
Um, we need to bu, have a budget amendment to receive a firefighter's grant that Chief Irwin got for last year, but it, they didn't show up, the equipment didn't show up, so, and now we're here.
Yes, yes, sir. So last year- So last year, we approved a budget amendment for, um, the AFT grant and the next one, which is the Missouri Department of Public Safety's grants. Um, unfortunately, those, those equipment didn't come in, so the funds weren't expended last year, but they don't carry over year to year. So we need to do another budget amendment to pay for those, those radios that we previously approved, jump in the next fiscal year. And I, I really cracked the whip on trying to get them to get those radios here, but they wouldn't do it. Um, so we just need to do a budget amendment to pay for the AFT grant and the DPS grant funds. And that's both of them. And with that, unless you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we have, uh, a resolution and ordinance in connection to this budget amendment. Call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution twenty eighty-seven. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
May I have you approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution passes. Now we'll call for the, uh, reading of the ordinance submitting the budget.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding purchase of radios for fire department utilizing grant, grant funds through assistance to firefighters grant. Second reading?
Second.
A motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding purchase of radios for fire department utilizing grant funds through assistance to firefighters grant.
Final passage?
Second.
A motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yeah.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
We need another amendment, uh, for the DPS funds, uh, safety equipment grant. Okay? Here again, we have a resolution and ordinance in connection to this matter. Call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution twenty eighty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
May I have you approve?
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Any council discussion regarding the approval of this resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Then we'll call for the reading of the ordinance in connection to this budget amendment.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-four. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding purchase of radios for fire department utilizing grant funds through Missouri Department of Public Safety. Second reading?
Second. I have a motion in a second, a second reading of this ordinance. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
You need another reading.
I'm sorry, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-four. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding purchase of radios for fire department utilizing grant funds through Missouri Department of Public Safety. Final passage?
Second. A motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
All right. Uh, moving along, we have community development, Chairman Foster, you have four.
Thank you very much. Uh, tonight I have two items, the first of which is, um, the sub-recipient grant agreement for the Paul Bruin Grant. The sub-recipient award agreement template for the Paul Bruin Historic Preservation Grant, developed in coordination with the granting agency, was approved at the last council meeting of March. Using this template, staff is now working individually with each property owner identified as a successful applicant. One such agreement was approved at the first meeting in April. Staff has negotiated four more sub-recipient award agreements and recommends approval of such agreements. As a reminder, the city only administers these grants as the recipient to pass through the sub-recipient and as such, receives none of the funding nor is any other city funds expected on, expended on these projects. The Historic Preservation Commission, with Director Simmons' coordination, support, and guidance, reviewed each of the many applicants received, scored, and prioritized them for funding. Further, Director Simmons has worked with the granting agency to navigate through the additional scrutiny on the appropriateness of the awards and fits with their guidelines.
Okay, we have four, four ordinances in relation to this matter. Call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing and approve, approving the Paul Bruin's, uh, grant sub-recipient for four twenty South Ohio.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-five. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at four eighteen South Ohio and four twenty South Ohio. Second reading?
Second.
A motion in a second for second reading, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-five. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at four eighteen South Ohio and four twenty South Ohio. Final passage?
Second. A motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller is absent. Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Five yes, two absent.
All right. Six yes, two absent. Bill passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter. This is the ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for five oh six South Ohio and five ten South Ohio.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-six. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Window Replacements and Mortar Work at five oh six South Ohio and five ten South Ohio. Second reading?
Second. A motion in a second for second reading, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-six. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Window Replacements and Mortar Work at five oh six South Ohio and five ten South Ohio. Final passage?
Second.
A motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, bill passes. I call for the reading of the third ordinance in relation to this matter. This is authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient for one, uh, one thirteen East Fourth.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at one thirteen East Fourth Street. Second reading?
Second.
A motion in a second for second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at one thirteen East Fourth Street.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Bill passes. Now I have a, uh, call for the reading of the fourth and final ordinance in relation to this matter. This is authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient for three twenty-two South Ohio.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-eight. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at three twenty-two South Ohio. Second reading?
Second.
A motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-eight. An ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Brickwork and Roof Repair at three twenty-two South Ohio. Final passage? Second.
A motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
All right. The next item I have is renew the Main Street Program Agreement. The city has been using the Main Street approach to assist with and encourage the revitalization of our downtown. Through this program and the assistance of Missouri Main Street Connection with grants, we've organized Sedalia Main Street. Under Director Simmons and Planner Downtown Specialist Cornine's leadership by utilizing this model, a huge amount of progress has been made and the level of excitement and commitment to revitalization is much greater than we have ever expected, experienced. In a relatively short amount of time, the city's status and the program has been restored to affiliate. The agreement essentially gives us the ability to continue to use our model and tools while we agree to abide by their guidelines on them. Uh, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
All right, call for the ordinance authorizing the twenty twenty-four Annual Main Street Program Agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing the twenty twenty-four Annual Main Street Program Agreement. Second reading?
Second.
A motion in a second for second reading, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing the twenty twenty-four Annual Main Street Program Agreement. Final passage?
Second.
A motion in a second for final passage of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please?
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
And Marshall is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, uh, yeah, given the, uh, committee assignments to the clerk, go ahead and call for the reading of the committee assignments.
To City Council from Mayor Andrew Dawson, subject appointments to council committees. Public Safety Council Committee, Chairperson Jack Robinson, Vice Chairperson Steve Bliss, Member Bob Hiller. Community Development Council Committee, Chairperson Rhannon Foster, Vice Chairperson Bob Cross, Members Tina Bogus and Steve Bliss. Finance and Administration Council Committee, Chairperson Tina Bogus, Vice Chairperson Tom Oldham, Member Chris Marshall. And Public Works Council Committee, Chairperson Bob Hiller, Vice Chairperson Tina Bogus, Member Rhannon Foster.
Okay. Next, we have the acceptance of resignation. Go ahead and call for the reading of the resignation.
To members of the City Council from Mayor Andrew Dawson, acceptance of resignation from John Katie from Bothell Regional Health Center Board of Trustees effective immediately.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next, we have new appointments. Call for the reading of the new appointment.
To members of the City Council from Mayor Andrew Dawson, new appointment to the Bothell Regional Health Center Board of Trustees, Cassie Brown, completing Paul Bassett's term expiring June twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now we have the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one renewal tonight. Garrett Volker doing business as Volkers at ten twenty-one South Limit for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now we move along to the miscellaneous items from the City Council and City Minister. Anybody got any?
Um, yeah, I just want to state that it seems like there might be some little confusion on the, uh, Paul Bruin Grants. We just want to make it clear that those that have received those, the owners of those properties have to put money into that as well as the money from the grant. So it's not the grant taking care of everything, the owners also have to pay money for it.
There's a match associated with that.
Mm-hmm. There's a matching. Because the City Council decides to go back on the decision to support the Lions Club on their endeavor, is there a plan in place to return the money back to the service clubs and organizations that worked hard to raise that money? If not, I would, uh, suggest that since we're not continuing on with this endeavor, that we find some way to return that money back to the service clubs and organizations.
Yeah, we can do that.
It was a restricted donation, so we can't use it for anything else, either.
Anybody else?
Okay, uh, well, uh, first, I'd like to express my appreciation for John Katie and his service on the Bothell Regional Health Center Board. That, um, that was a big commitment and, um, made, uh, made a lot of difference in that board, so.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
I'm very proud of John and the work he did on that board.
The, um, uh, and as far as the good and welfare comments and responses from the last meeting, I will be more brief, uh, than I have in the past, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll go through it. Um, after reviewing the comments from the last meeting, good and welfare portion of the meeting, Mr. Goodson on the economic development incentives, council moved for a point of information to have Mr. Goodson come forward and provide additional information on this matter. Mr. Goodson stated that the, the cost to extend the water line is not near forty thousand. He received a quote of nineteen thousand seven fifty, but the line was not where he thought it was, so it would be more than that because they had to extend further than anticipated. He estimated it would be another three to five thousand dollars more. He expressed appreciation to council for, uh, to be willing to discuss this further and he had met with every council member over the last several weeks. and he had met with every council member over the last several weeks. He thought when this was being discussed before, that it was just a formality to having council approve. He expressed concern over the incentive deal that was offered where he thought they would have a fifty thousand dollar fine if they failed a fire inspection over the next five years or if they did not meet the employee targets. Note that later in the discussion, it was clarified that there were no fines or more callbacks for not meeting fire codes. He went on, if they drop employees, they have bigger problems than, than a water line. He discussed other locations they own, properties, and, um, that he could build on. Um, and that it would be easier to hire professional staff in Columbia than getting them to relocate to Sedalia. They thought though, that if they could get water, the water line and the permits, it would be better to have the headquarters in their backyard where he was born and raised. Councilwoman Bogus asked what the bottom line was that he was asking for. Mr. Goodson responded then, um, that he was asking for the water line, which he was quoted from BMP at nineteen thousand seven fifty, but is going to be a little higher since the main is further away than anticipated. When inquired further, he anticipated it would be twenty-five thousand dollars total with the increase. He also requested for the building permits to be waived, which are currently twenty-eight thousand two forty-one, but there were a couple added permits for signs, so it is, it is somewhere around twenty-nine to thirty thousand dollars. Councilman Bliss brought up that we would, we need some sort of reporting to show the reason for the incentive. Mr. Goodson said that he, said he understood, he just did not want to have to do it every quarter. City Attorney Lopper reminded council that all agreements with cities have to be in writing and suggested that if this, it is the will of the council, excuse me, to direct staff to pull together a revised agreement that would address the terms being discussed. We could then discuss with Mr. Goodson and then bring back to a council in a closed meeting to negotiate further and ultimately bring the finished product to an open meeting for a vote. Council approved a motion to do just that. So, in response, uh, we have been working with Mr. Goodson. Uh, I did make, make revisions, sent it to Mr. Goodson. Mr. Goodson replied, uh, asking for additional changes, so we continue to work to finalize that agreement. Becca Lestrada, um, made the suggestion that, uh, responses to the previous good and welfare comments be put on the agenda to save us all a lot of time. As a response, what we are hearing in several of these comments in, is those that are making them want responses and more transparency not less. Further, in taking these comments seriously, to research and pull together the responses on top of my other duties, I do not have these prepared in time to meet the deadline for distribution of the package. In accordance with the sunshine law, the packet goes out Friday, and I have been preparing these over the weekend and throughout the day on Monday to include today. Councilman Oldham responded, um, that this is something we could discuss to look at ways to make it more efficient. So, as an additional response, I have tried to be more brief in my responses. With that said, I remain open, as always, to discuss in more detail any of these issues, uh, if anybody wants to come in and discuss it. Diane Simon made the comment that she was bringing the, the annexation, which we did, which we dealt with today. Harry Holfer, um, Mr. Holfer stated he liked the conversation with Mr. Goodson, and he went on to say, "It is, it is a sad time, and there is ways to fix this deal with fire across the tracks." He stated he knew that there was a lawsuit and it stems back to Devon trying to inspect the courthouse, and they said, "No, you're not," and she tried the same thing with him. He stated she is the, she is one of the big problems because of her demeanor. He suggested training such as Dale Carnegie, How to Win Friends and Influence People. Mr. Holfer then, uh, went back to the lawsuit deal and stated the money the city says they owe, he guessed it was on paper somewhere, but he bet that none of the members were here when the money was, was getting found. He stated they have a nice building out there that he bet would, uh, house a fire truck and an ambulance. He suggested that we all put all of this aside and work together. Response, Mr. Holfer's summation assessment of what the lawsuit with the county is about is inaccurate. A more accurate summation of this lawsuit is about the county commissioner's resistance to working with the city to keep citizens safe, such as allowing fire pre-planning at the jail. In the interest of time, I will simply reiterate that the court documents are public record and easily accessible through CaseNet. Further, as acknowledged several times in response to these comments, the city can do better in their approach and demeanor in enforcing codes to include CBO Lake. We have taken these comments, suggestions and feedback seriously and are taking definitive steps to improve, to include more customer service training for Ms. Lake and the rest of this staff as suggested in the comment. In regard to using the county building to, uh, house a fire truck, we appreciate the suggestion, and we are exploring all options that come to mind, including this one, uh, as presented in Chief Irwin's, um, presentation. Mr. Holfer then turned to the concept of shoring up the bridge and thought that was a bad idea. He stated that he did not think any engineer would put a stamp on plans for city, the city workers to shore up the bridge. He suggested we need to work on a replacement bridge. Response, we appreciate his opinion on this option. The city will continue to explore all options in search of a viable solution as quickly as possible. His time had expired, so he asked for a couple more minutes. Councilman Oldham said he would make motions that really wanted comments to be constructive and not just rants so that everyone had a chance to speak. The motion was made and council approved to allow him three more minutes. He stated that he brought up toning out the county and no one reached out to them. He also stated they have a ton of money and they told him they would make it happen. Mr. Holfer went on to say, uh, he bet their response times would be less. As a response, uh, there was a detailed response to this concept from the 3/18th, March 18th meeting, followed up on at the 4/1 meeting, and in the interest of time, that will be not be repeated. As a brief summary, the fire district is only partially manned during the day, during the week, so simply toning them out will not solve the problem. However, since that time, the city continues to look for viable solutions, including working with the Fire Protection District. The Fire Protection District did put together a proposal outlining what the city would have to pay them for using one of the engine bays on Radio Hill Road on a temporary basis. At the writing of these notes, we believe we have located a much, much better option since the response times from Radio Hill Road are not favorable as Chief Irwin's presentation shows. Kevin Luzon, uh, asked for my notes, and he would post, see if Wednesday review would post them in their entirety. Uh, as a response, I emailed my rough notes to Mr. Luzon, and he has them. Chad Danlow, from 2407 Dennis, he stated by, or he started by promising to keep his comments PG this time. Mr. Danlow stated he did not feel his concerns were addressed. He felt that the only thing my research indicated was that his timeline was off and that instead of thirty-five days, it was fifty-seven days. As a response, it is unfortunate that my research was not able to satisfy Mr. Danlow. Since that meeting, I did look back at my calendar to see if I could tell when the complaint was made in relationship to the towing of this vehicle. It appears from looking back at my calendar, the meeting took place on March 30th of 2020 pre, which would have been a hundred and thirty-nine days prior to the vehicle being towed. However, with that said, this is not the underlying point of the entirety of the research. Whether it was thirty-five days, fifty-seven days, or a hundred and thirty-nine days, as I stated in my research, as I stated, my research was inconclusive as to the towing of this vehicle was in retaliation for making a complaint. He went on to state that he was being targeted because there is a vehicle across from the, from his shop that has a 2021 tag on it. He stated that code enforcement must only go down certain streets or parts of town. As a response, there have been cases involving motor vehicles at six addresses other than Mr. Danlow's in the 2300 to 2500 block of Dennis from 2021 through 2023. Of particular note, the address across the street had an unlicensed vehicle being dealt with around the same time as Mr. Danlow's vehicle. This case was issued a citation, and the case was dismissed and closed after the vehicle was licensed as compliance is, is all the city desires. Also, next door to Mr. Danlow's, a letter was issued the same day as Mr. Danlow's letter about an unlicensed vehicle. Upon follow-up, ten days later, this vehicle was no longer there. Also, he went on that the assertion that being addressed to the tenant was BS since his name was on the water bill. As a response, point taken, staff, that staff could have looked up the billing records on the utilities for the residents. I'm not in a position to prove or disprove they actually did. He mentioned that Devon Lake was being, as being evil and will not work with people, and he assumed it was being directed by me. As a response, no one is being directed to be evil and to not work with people. Actually, as stated earlier, the city is actively working on ways to improve the approach and encourage compliance with Building and Safety Property Maintenance Code. He then went on to comment from, onto a comment from the last meeting that was not responded to. He reiterated a complaint that he was told by a code enforcement officer, "What doesn't matter, you're getting paid anyway." He asked for a response to that complaint as he stated this was a major problem. It matters to him because he is there for the people he does work for. As a response, I did not realize that Mr. Danlow was asking for a response to this issue in his comments at the 4/1 meeting. I thought that when he made the complaint, we agreed with him that this statement nor the sentiment behind it were appropriate. For clarity to everyone, no, this is not acceptable mindset from our building inspectors, and management has made this clear to them. Jim Markin, um, um, made the, made the comments. Commissioner Markin stated that, that I made it sound like they were the bad people, and what he is trying to show is that the case was about building things inside the city, and the county has not built anything since the 30th. So, it is a difference of the approach of what we feel this suit is about. As a response, in addressing a comment made by another individual from the last meeting, it certainly, no, was not my intent to demonize anyone. I was simply pointing out that the city was not quick to sue and unwilling to talk to the commissioners as alleged. The suit was only brought about after common, after a common understanding of what the law says was failed to be reached through discussions with the commissioners. With that said, summarizing what the case is about as being about building things inside the city is something Commissioner Markin and I disagree on. In my view and understanding of what council is interested in, only looking at two examples of issues in the documents available through CaseNet, much better show what this case is truly about. First, the commission has refused access to the fire department to let them, let them to perform a pre-plan at any county-owned building. Not allowing these first responders to adequately plan for the rescue of individuals that may be trapped by a fire not only greatly diminishes, diminishes the likelihood of being able to save those lives, but it also puts the firefighters' lives at unnecessary risk. The issue is bad enough at any building the county invites the public to, but even more exemplified when considering the jail. Thinking about a building that is designed to keep people in, including employees, mind you, then imagine filling that building with smoke and fire, then asking firefighters to go in and rescue them without the benefit of being able to plan for that event is unconscionable. If the commission has provided a valid reason for putting these lives at unnecessary danger, I am not aware of it. Second, two commissioners complained openly about receiving letters from the city about the downtown building inspection program. This program was developed ten years ago as a result of individuals being killed and buildings collapsing. Rather than sitting on the sidelines and hoping no one else dies, the city council at the time created a program where the city hires a structural engineer to review the old buildings in the downtown area to see if they are still safe, at no cost to the property owners, mind you. It is hard to understand why the commissioners would not allow pre-expert professional assistance in order to provide some peace of mind that the citizens and employees entering these buildings are safe. Beyond only those two real examples, examples, as Commissioner Markin knows, this is not about the money for the permits or fines. However, city council was told by the county commission in no uncertain terms that they did not care what the law says, nor what, what contracts say, and they continue to use nothing short of extortion tactics with the taxpayers' money in attempt to get the council to turn a blind eye to their behavior that puts people's lives in danger. Rather than succumb to these tactics or responding in kind, council has simply chosen to quietly avail itself of the court system this great country has set up to resolve matters just like this in a civilized manner. Secondly, he stated, "They did not know they needed permits until they bought the Equity Building and it blew up from there." He then further stated that to this day, the city water or sewer department was never asked to get an excavation permit, and they have had that since the seventies to cross their roads. He stated, "We probably didn't know they had those permits and they didn't know the city, city had permits until we told them, and we still do not know if we do or not." As a response, "It is my understanding that the county told the city Public Works Director sometime around 2022 that the city had to start paying for excavation permits, and the city has been. After a quick look, I found where the water department paid for at least one such permit." Debbie Covington, Ms. Covington stated her concern about Devon Lake being the one that was strong holding them to having to get a retail business license, and they had business, been in business for over thirty-five years with only a contractor's license. She went on stating that she met with me and I got back to her, and she appreciated that. However, in that meeting with me, I took responsibility for Devon's actions, but she still continues. Response, "As acknowledged several times in responding to these comments, the city can do better in their approach and demeanor in enforcing codes, including CBO Lake. We have taken these comments, suggestions and feedback seriously and are taking definitive steps to improve, to include more customer service training for Ms. Lake and the rest of this staff." Ms. Covington also restated her objection to the code enforcement manager not living in the city. As a response, "We respect Ms. Covington's opinion." She went on, on stating that she stood on the fact that there is still a lack of honesty and transparency. As a response, "While we disagree, we respect Ms. Covington's opinion. We maintain that we go to great lengths to provide the facts in a transparent manner to include this process of responding to these comments." Seeing that her time was up, she asked for more time and apologized for being combative in prior meetings, but stated, "We have to understand that she is very frustrated." Councilman Oldham stated he thought this conversation would be more effective one-on-one, so no motion was made to grant more time. And that concludes the good and welfare comments from the last meeting.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we now arrive at the good and welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker will be allotted, or is requested to step forward, clearly state their name and address, and then will be allotted three minutes to produce their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with council, or is it a period for question and answers? It's a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community manners. So, now we'll go and open that up. If anybody would like to, go ahead and step forward, state your name and your address, and you got three minutes.
Hello, my name's David Goodson. I reside at 1640 Hedge Apple Drive, and to the council, I want to say thank you. I did receive a letter from Calvin Shaw with outlining the, the agreement. Um, I found it very acceptable with three minor changes, which was somewhat, not sure why we haven't got that done. Those were, the developer was not impacted, developer was David and Julie Goodson, simple line change. I mean, I just pick one word out, put another name in it. And the other was, um, not knowing if we would be required to have any additional permits for our building for a few small tasks that have not had permits pulled for them yet or got to that point in the job. I ask that those permits just be included, any permits for the job, or that be for the, I didn't know if the asphalt guys are going to need a permit, or any of the small things we have left to finish up, landscapers, whatever, small permits may still be coming if there were, if they were required that those be included as well. And then I also included the actual invoice I had just gotten, I think, the day after the meeting. I had to look at the date on that, that I sent, but I got from BMP, which was just a little bit higher than what I had estimated. So, that was the, really, I found it all very acceptable, and I do appreciate you all revisiting that and doing that, um, but those were the only three changes that I had, had asked for, which really were just getting the developing name right, that Impact was the tenant, David and Julie were the developers. Um, I do have one more thing I would like to ask you guys. Lot of rumbling in my neighborhood about the city wanting to annexes. I live in the Walnut Hills subdivision, um, but, uh, hearing talk of annexation of Walnut Hills, Country Club, Country Club West, um, some houses down Thirty-second Street up to Quismberry. And, um, my question would be if we are not providing adequate infrastructure, upkeep and maintenance to roads, fire hydrants we have tagged out, um, streets are in such disrepair, some need just totally rebuilt, you know, it's just where we're at. And, uh, beyond provide, Chief Irwin's done a great job with his presentation, but we need more fire service. How in the world would we take on more geographical area to annex into the city? And I would ask if that's a topic that you guys are having serious discussion about, that you share it with us, because, um, I don't speak for everybody in my neighborhood, but I know a great number of them are very uneasy about what's being said. And so, if that's the intent, I would ask you guys to please make that be known so that there would be input from the people it affects the most, and that are the residents of my neighborhood. So, for that, thank you, and again, thank you guys for revisiting our permits and water line issues, and hopefully we can get those three minor, minor changes made and, you know, and get this thing wrapped up. Thank you.
Up next.
Harry Holfer, 1408 South Mary. Uh, I want to say thanks to the, uh, conversation back on, um, addressing some issues that I had been speaking of. Uh, I think that's great. Um, I got to put a shout out to the, the public works, I believe that's who takes care of it, but, uh, the lady across from street had some big trees fall. They were the city's trees on the sidewalk side of the street fell. Um, they were in my driveway blocking the road before I could leave my shop and get there, and city crew was already over there. The city crew was already over there cutting them, moving them, loading them out of the way and they broke two trees out of her yard, the same tree. The thing I do have a question about is I know we're the city of trees, right? The, you know, you don't want, we can't mess with trees because of bat migration. This lady, if she lives, I'd say six oh eight to be six oh nine, South Barrett, has two really bad trees on the street side of the sidewalk. So they're actually, you know, you can call, I've called, it's all free, eat your trees topped, nothing blows out of mine, that's all free that you all offer. She has reached out about getting those trees, and they're, they're bad. I had a tree, I had to have a tree specialist come over from the conservation department. We marked a crack in mine because they'd sent somebody over and said that they were fine. Well, it was, the crack was getting bigger every year. So they came over and told us. Well, then I relayed that to you guys. You came over finally and put a, put a deal on students' bat migration over, you got those trees down. She's been trying for over two years to get this tree taken down and it's in real bad shape. It's missed her car twice, it's been going on, now the wind got up, it blew two limbs out in the street. Somebody's going to get hit, it's going to mess up some damage or whatever. So how do, how would we fast track something like that when it's, you know, when it, I mean, your all guys saw how bad the tree was. I mean, even the tree people were over there looking at it shaking their head. But how do we fast track something like that through your all's part to address these limbs that are getting taken out? A lot of these, any storms are taken out because a lot of people don't know you all top the trees at no expense. You just have to get on the list. So I think that would be some way to maybe get that out more before spring, before the storms come. And then after, maybe, maybe be a way to send somebody out and say, we got to get this tree down and make an exception to put that ahead of the list of another. So that's it.
Okay. Did you say six, Perry Sixton Barrett?
Uh, it'd be fourteen oh nine.
Fourteen oh nine?
Yep.
Fourteenth and Barrett?
Yep, right between my house and Janet Proctor's house.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh-huh. Up next.
Hi, my name is Rachel Monahan. I live at two four one five zero Oak Grove Lane. And I would like for you to see the next time you guys go through a school zone to look at the time of day and to see that there were, this afternoon, I went past Heber Hunt. It was after four o'clock and there were still parents picking up students and students walking home. And I'd like to have your thought about possibly extending the ending timeframe for this school zone. Thank you.
Point of information, motion point of information. I believe the police department currently has a program with Officer Sylvie that he's working with the, with the school zones and school officials to increase the safety in that. So I think that's a message that we can relate to Chief Woolery to relate to that. Thank you.
My name is Gary Lowbaugh. I live at eight twenty-one South Arlington Avenue in Sedalia, Missouri. The clarity that our parks director just gave us about the inches, it didn't reassure me much, you know? Contamination is contamination and if it's inches, like, is it just this inch here or is it inch there or is it all over? Is it edge over the whole area or what? And I don't know, maybe I watch too many health movies, but it's, I'm not reassured by it. And to me, due diligence was not used in purchasing this property. If it's contaminated, why, why buy it? Why give us another headache? We're going to have to completely get rid of all the contamination or we're going to have glow-in-the-dark people adopt with center. It's just, to me, due diligence was not used by this council, not, excuse me, maybe not this council, maybe not this mayor, maybe not this city administrator, but whoever bought it did not use due diligence. And that's what you're here for, to look over this city and to make decisions that are for the welfare of us. Also, I'd like to, to address that the city needs to look over this, this overtime for firefighters and for city policemen. This, whatever, the federal government gave you a loophole and you used it. Why? It's not needed. These men put their life on the line for us and they should be paid overtime in accordance with how many hours they work. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Come on up.
Diane Simon, I live at one seven four four nine Brockman Coal Camp. I own property in Sedalia, Pitts County. Question, just a follow-up on the city ordinances. My understanding that they were too late for, for a public comment for a certain period of time and then come for city approval the first of June, is that correct? And if, have there been any changes or updates in any of the proposed ordinances?
You talked about codes?
Yes, codes. Mm-hmm.
I can get what you have to the meeting.
Okay. Is, is June the right date? It seems like that's right, I remember. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right. Seeing no more public comment, I motion to move the closed-door session for legal advice, real estate, personnel and negotiated contract.
Motion to move the closed-door session, you have a second. Uh, we, we roll call.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Do I have a motion and second to return to open meeting?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yep.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall's absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
First item to, for approval is the ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of the property commonly known as two oh seven South Grand. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as two oh seven South Grand Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Renaldo Talavera and Yulia Talavera.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion and second regarding the second reading of this ordinance, having council discussion. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as two oh seven South Grand Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Renaldo Talavera and Yulia Talavera.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion and second regarding the final passage of this ordinance, having council discussion. Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent and Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Next item is an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as two fifteen East Celine Street. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-one. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as two fifteen East Celine Street from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Melissa El Schick and David R. Barnhill.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion and second regarding the second reading and council discussion. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-one. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as two fifteen East Celine Street from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Melissa El Schick and David R. Barnhill.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion and second for the final passage of this ordinance, having council discussion. Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall's absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
I have a ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a general warranty deed for the sale of the property commonly known as two hundred South Marvin. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-two. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a general warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as two hundred South Marvin from LHB Investments LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company to the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
I have a motion and second, a motion and second for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion regarding the second reading of this bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-two. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a general warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as two hundred South Marvin from LHB Investments LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company to the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
No.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one absent.
Bill passes. Next, I have an ordinance authorizing a development agreement between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Impact Signs Owning and Wraps.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-three. An ordinance authorizing a development agreement by and between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Impact Signs Ownings Wraps Incorporated.
Second reading.
Second. Have any council discussion regarding the second reading of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-four eighty-three. An ordinance authorizing a development agreement by and between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Impact Signs Ownings Wraps Incorporated.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion and second for the final passage of this bill regarding the council discussion. Having heard none, roll call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right. Bill passes. I'll now undertake a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. The council discussion regarding the adjournment is on the floor. Before we leave, I would like to express my disappointment.
This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to express my disappointment. August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, this council passed a resolution off stadium that they would support, the lines of building out and fundraising, those monies to put those lingo's on the water cup. And then tonight, this council effectively went back on that promise and that resolution and voted that down. If, if you guys didn't want this moving forward, you should never have them break those funds. I don't know how I'm going to go back and look these people in the eye and say that they decided not to do this. That's my piece. And so now I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of adjournment? Thank you.
I echo, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I'm, I'm adjourned.
All those opposed? You adjourn. Uh, this is this.